To order the June 26, 2017 meeting of the Board of Slough and Quarter, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next item, approval of minutes of June 12, 2017, regular meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you. Just for a moment, mention that Town Administrator John Coder is absent tonight. I believe his daughter is singing at Carnegie Hall. Kim Foster, Assistant Town Administrator, taking care of the duties here tonight and keeping us all organized, so thank you very much.
Did you say impostor or did you say Kim Foster?
Kim Foster.
Okay.
Yes. Both of those apply.
A little comic relief.
There we go.
Kim will not be singing tonight.
It's now past the hour of 7 o'clock. We have a public hearing to consider an application for a new all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license as submitted by Sing Sing Northborough, Inc., doing business as Honto Northborough, for premises located at 10010Q Shops Way.
Yep.
Yes, please, step up. Have a seat.
Diane.
State your names, please.
Hi, I'm Attorney Jacqueline Hathaway for Raymond Young.
Yeah, hi, everybody. My name's Ray, last name John.
John.
John, and he's the President Treasurer of Sing Sing Northborough, Inc.
Okay.
Okay.
And you're, this is for a new alcohol beverage license?
Yes, so this is for, yes, a new all liquor, full liquor license. And so what we're looking for, just a little background, so.
Please.
Mr. Young has owned now, this will be his third restaurant, all Asian fusion type of food, with full liquor licenses. The first one was about 10 years ago in Chinatown called Shanghai Restaurant. Approximately five years ago, he, and then he sold that and he purchased Honto, which is in Ashland, Mass. And now we have the new property. And it's important to note during, you know, during his whole, the whole time, there's never been any liquor license violation that he's ever cited.
Excellent.
So I guess if you want to ask questions, or I just wanted to, you know, mention a few things of what he's done at the other restaurants, which I think has been, proven him successful and why there hasn't been any violations. One of the things that they do at the restaurant now is he has his bartenders keep track of people's drinks. So, and if it's, and more than three, they do report to Ray, because he's a manager there now. So that's one thing. There's no free drinks, no one gets any free drinks. In terms of fruit drinks, like Mai Tais and stuff, there are no individual, there's only, and it has to be.
Only three or more.
Yeah, three, and then you have to have, like, the larger has to be at least two people, you can't just have one person drinking that. So that's pretty much it. He intends to be the manager there, and looking forward to open the restaurant. He has about 10% left to do on the build-out to open, and of course, we're waiting for the approval on the liquor license, and he has to do the food applications and all of that for those licenses.
Sure.
So Mr. Young is here, if you'd like to ask him any questions.
Maybe you could just give us a little bit of information about the restaurant itself, the style of food and everything, just to give us a sense of.
So it would be, you know, do you want it?
You can.
All right, traditional Asian, and the Asian-like fusion. There will be a sushi bar there as well. And I don't know if you looked at the floor plans on it, it's really, really lovely the way it's laid out. But it's not going to be like, you know, I don't want to say traditional.
Yeah, it's more traditional Asian food.
Traditional Asian food.
Not like Chinese-American.
Authentic.
Yeah, they could say authentic.
Authentic, right.
Yep. Very good, sounds like a welcome addition. Any questions by the board? Leslie.
Thank you very much for your application. And is there anything that, first of all, I do like what you're doing with the beverages. Number two, is there anything that you're changing from your establishment in Ashland that maybe you just wanted to improve upon, or is it literally the same, the same plan?
Well, definitely we're going to do not same from, you know, Ashland what we have now, because this is different clientele, that's what we're going to do, a little upscale, yes. That's what I would, you know, plan to.
But with regard to the serving of the alcoholic beverages, no. At this stage, it seems to be very effective and seems to be working this way, so if it's not broken, why fix it, you know? And if anything turns up that, you know, we need to tweak or whatever, since he'll be, right now, a hands-on manager and he's there, you know, of course, and any feedback that we receive from boards or gentleman who does the monitoring of the liquor license for the Police Department Detective.
Detective Griffin?
Yes, that Ray had met with.
Yeah.
So, you know, any feedback, we of course will absolutely entertain and, you know, and take it and implement it.
Sure.
Sounds like a good plan, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeff.
Thank you.
I just wondered if the Chief had anything, since Detective Griffin is in here.
Griffin did his background as normal for the license. He reached out to his counterparts in Ashland, got nothing but good reports, no concerns.
Great. Very good.
I think it'll be a great addition to the plaza up there. Looking forward to it. Going to have outdoor patio too?
Yes, we will.
Some seating. How many tables you going to put out?
Roughly around, I do not remember on top of my mind right now, because I'm a little psyched. But yeah, right around eight, right around eight, yeah, eight or nine, yeah, tables right on there.
That'll be great.
Yeah.
Jeff.
How late will you be open at night?
We would love to open until two, well, well, last call is pretty much before, I mean, half hour before we are closed. I would love to one.
One, okay.
Very good.
And chances were, I just looked on the floor plan, there actually is eight, that is on the floor plan designed for the outdoor patio.
Oh, yeah.
See, you were right.
Yeah.
Dawn.
Yep, and I'd like to welcome you and wish you luck, and I think you will be a great addition up there, so.
Thank you.
It's a nice blend of restaurants that they're bringing in.
Thank you.
And with that, I'd like to make a motion. Public hearing. Sorry.
This is a, this is a public hearing, so would anyone in the audience have any comments they'd like to offer? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move the board vote to approve the application for a new all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license as submitted by Sing Sing Northborough, doing business as Honto Northborough, for premises located at 10,010Q Shops Way, with the condition that the licensee receive satisfactory inspections by the Building, Fire, and Health Departments.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
It's now past the hour of 7:05, and we have a hearing to consider a request from Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza of Northborough LLC to change the beneficial interest structure for their all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license for premises located at 10002B Shops Way. This is a hearing, not a public hearing, so please have a seat, introduce yourself.
Good evening, my name is Timothy Perry, I'm an attorney in Boston, I represent here tonight Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza. We're here just for a change of officers. I think all the application and paperwork is in, but to summarize, it's, we have Samuel Weiss, who was the Secretary, and Patrick Marzano, who had been the Treasurer, have resigned as officers from the company. And Charles Locke will be taking over as Secretary. Robert, Ronald Donella will be the Treasurer. And then, there's also been a death, Douglas Schmick, who's probably best known as the, one of the founders of McCormick &amp; Schmick Restaurants. He had been on the board, he's passed away. He'll be replaced by Matthew McLale. So those are just some of the corporate changes that have happened at the company, and the application process will go from here to the ABCC for approval.
Okay, so this is just change of officers essentially?
That's right, they're going to continue to operate just as they have.
Right. We have it noted here, and I'll check with Chief Liver, Detective Sergeant Brian Griffin did the investigation for this, and there are no concerns at all.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Board, any questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the application as submitted by Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza of Northborough LLC to change the beneficial interest structure for their all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license for premises located at 10002B Shops Way.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
Glad to hear you back in.
Yes, I know.
It's now past the hour of 7:10 PM, and we have Rick Leaf, Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation, update on the construction of affordable housing by the NAHC and Habitat for Humanity for property located at 33 through 35 and 37 through 39 Main Street. Gentlemen, you look familiar.
We are.
To each other we are, I'll tell you that.
We like coming back here.
For the viewers, could you just state your names for the record?
Okay, Rick Leaf, I'm Treasurer of Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation. Sitting next to me here is Tim Ferment, he's the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity, Metro West Greater Worcester.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks for having us back.
Yep.
So I'm just going to spend a couple of minutes and just do a kind of a brief background on how we got to where we are, and then Tim's going to give you an update on where we stand with the construction project, and kind of what's going to happen from here on out. So just refresh your memories, town meeting 2015, the Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation was approved for a grant of $500,000 for future affordable housing development. In the fall of that year, Trinity Church came to the Housing Corporation and asked if we would have an interest in buying the two properties between 33 and 39 Main Street for the purpose of developing them into affordable housing, and also to preserve the exterior appearance of those houses from the street, because they had some historic value, especially the larger house, which was the old Gale General Store. We had been working with Habitat to see if there'd be a project we could partner on, and after hearing that, I called Tim. He came out in the fall of 2015 with his structural engineers and other people, and they looked at the houses and verified that they would be appropriate for renovation. We did an appraisal on the property that verified that the appraised value was well over the asking price that the church was asking. And so we then went before the CPC in January of 2016 and asked for $400,000 of that $500,000 for use in this project, $300,000 to purchase the property, and $100,000 to be used to help out with the renovation cost. Habitat had estimated that the overall cost of the project would be $800,000, $300,000 for the purchase of the property, and $500,000 for the renovation. So basically, the town would be contributing half of the cost through CPA money, and Habitat would fundraise, and through gift and kind, raise the rest of the money. The CPC approved that, we came before you in March of 2016, your board approved the project. Also, we went before the ZBA in June of 2016, and they approved the project. Tim then worked with DHCD, and the town and Habitat and DHCD signed a regulatory agreement in September of 2016 that would allow these four condos that are going to be built in these two houses to be counted on the town's affordable housing inventory. And we did a real estate closing in September of 2016, at which we spent the $300,000 of CPA money to purchase the house, and then immediately turned around and donated the property to Habitat for Humanity. And they've been in control of the project with us kind of, kind of watching over the show ever since. Just one other thing I want to say that we weren't aware of, but as the renovation began, in the larger house, which was the Gale General Store, and walls were taken down, a number of old documents and letters were found in the walls.
Cool.
And they were very interesting, and we actually brought the Historical Society over and turned over to them some of these documents, and I just want to show you one that was actually written by Cyrus Gale, it was an invoice to one of his clients in 1846. If you just want to pass that down, it was very interesting. We found a number of these handwritten documents, one went back to 1812, that was found in the walls there.
That's pretty cool.
The handwriting is very impressive, but the quality and the, how well the documents were somehow maintained inside the walls was amazing to us, and Ellen Racine over the Historical Society was.
Very surprised, the condition.
Yeah.
Do you think they slipped into the wall?
I'm not sure how they got in the walls, it's just when they took the walls down, they found them. They also found some penmanship exercises, some grade school kids did in there.
We did, like, when my family's old house in Pennsylvania, people used to take important documents and bury them behind walls, you know, because they didn't have safes, and, you know, it was expensive to have safes and that type of thing, and it was a good way to.
People put money in walls too, I don't know. I kind of thought you found any money there.
Nothing to disclose there.
We were looking for the money.
Of course you were.
Yes, we're still doing it.
It's just an easy way to keep stuff safe.
Yeah.
It's called the wall safe, the original wall safe.
Yeah. In your house.
Yeah.
Back in 1846, a box of raisins cost 12 cents, it's on the list there.
Are you serious? Imagine that.
How big a box was that?
Really hasn't gone up that much, if you think about it. Is it a box now, for a small box, or?
It was a bushel.
A lot of raisins back then. Anyway, it's fascinating to find something actually handwritten by Cyrus Gale that we could turn over to Historical Society. So there were four or five documents in pretty good condition that they have, and they have on a display now over in their building. So even though we didn't ask for any historical preservation money as part of this project, we did find some interesting history as we, as we went in there. So having said that, I'll turn it over to Tim, and he can bring you up to speed on where we stand on the.
Great handwriting, huh? Wow. If you don't mind, I will stand during my PowerPoint presentation.
Sure.
So, just an update on construction, as you've seen, there's been a lot of activity in Aspin, has mainly been working on the small house. As you see from the original house, so far, all the windows are put in, the front's all redone with the roof and the porch, and the doors, et cetera. They've done all the demolition. To start out, we had to do a basement, so a lot of lead and asbestos, as you would expect on both houses, cleared all that up before anybody got into the buildings. That ran higher than we thought, so we've got some budget concerns that we're monitoring as we go through. They've done a great job, 90% of the electrical's done, half the plumbing's done. And then the back of the house is the big change, you noticed that right away, that in order, if you recall, this house is two, two bedrooms stacked above. And so this is the addition to give the full bedroom to the upper section, so that was the building on top of this. But that's basically the small house, and then the larger house was a little bit more concerning. You know, not only the abatement, but basically we have rotted seal, we have a lot of structural issues, we didn't find any money, but we did find a lot of rot. So the rot's been taken care of, thanks to the architect and the structural engineer working alongside of us. Basically, on this picture, you can see the end of the basement and see all the way up through the room. So everything's torn out, new shoring up's going on, we're needed with the old shoring, taking it on top of that. The backside of the building kind of exposed, if you stand by and look at that, so this is pretty much well locked. And, you know, we're estimating right now from the completion date that the small house may be spring 2018, only because Aspen's away for the summer. We'd like to preserve that project, then come back to it, complete it, then us go in there and try to finish it. It keeps our team working on the bigger house, which is a little bit more complex. And then after they finish the small house, they'll come to the bigger house to do the plumbing and wiring. We've had a number of local builders, local vendors, and a gift and kind, where we have people participating in the project, that's about $60,000 to $70,000 already contributing. And that's how we work, we're asking people, can we all log, can you get this, can you get that, et cetera. So that's the construction piece, any question on that? A little complex, but, you know, our guys were up for it, and they were, you know, they kind of said we could have built that from ground up easier, but that's due on renovation. The partnership, like I said, certainly is involved, local people here in town. We had a women build, I'm going to sit back down. The women build that took place on site, which is women-only building, so that was for seven, eight days. Trinity Church has been totally involved with doing playhouses in their lot, raising money, supplying lunches, local business supplying lunches for women build. So truly, from a community effort, everybody's engaged, and that's what we want to see, and I think that's what you want to see as well. The other part, family selection took place in March. If you recall, we're asking for two local preference, and ideally, one veteran. Surprisingly, we got no veteran applications. And a lot of that has been the same throughout the area, as I come to learn, veterans that are in need aren't comfortable relocating necessarily out of their comfort zone, whatever the reason be, and I was chasing a number of veterans, you know, trying to get them into the lottery. Out of the lottery, out of those four houses, so the two, two bedrooms, a three and a five, we got three Northborough residents, and that's the way the lottery works, that if you don't, you kind of move the local into the general pool. So luckily, we got three Northborough residents who are here in town, Avalon's one of them, ones with the housing authority in a different facility, et cetera. And then a young lady with a single child out of Framingham. So that's, they're working on their sweat equity, so they're at the house, working alongside of us, they're working on their education, homeownership education, other classes that we get them engaged with. And then we have local partners assigned to them, so two residents from Northborough are their coaches, mentor, to get them through this next period of time. What about taxes, what about utilities, all that kind of stuff. And as we set on the budget, the $400,000 that came from the CPA bought the house, that $100,000 that's going to be allocated, looks like it's going to get used up, plus, you know, other monies that we'll be raising going along. We'll be applying for more and more grants, Federal Home Loan Bank is a natural one that we go after, and that's $25,000 per unit, so that's a $100,000 grant that we're looking at there. So the project's moving along. I'm sure you're seeing the activity daily onsite. It's a, the big one's more of a project than we anticipated, but it's going to be solid. And seeing the families work on the site, they're proud of what, what they're doing, they're excited about what they're doing, and I think it's going to be great. It's, it takes us longer to do it, but we do it right and with the community, so. With that, any questions?
Any questions by the board? Bill.
Yeah, I think it's, it's not more a question than a comment, I think it's great, especially with the people that are moving in, it's sweat equity. Yes. So they're involved in the project, they see how it goes, and they, I think they take more care, you know, in the project and in their home, you know? Yeah. And it's gone, I think it's gone a great process. I remember when the, John and I, with a whole group of you guys, we're out there, freezing cold day. That's right. Breaking ground, and it's a great project. In Aspin Valley, it's great to have them involved doing the plumbing and, and the wiring and all the work that they're doing, it's great, great community effort, very, very important.
I think Tim didn't mention it, but I think you had kids from Algonquin over there also, right?
Yeah, we had from Marlboro come over, so other engagements, because we had volunteers, we have Habitat chapters in most colleges and high schools. The site work outside's going to be done before winter, so that's putting in the basin and everything else for the runoff, and doing the paving and things like that before the winter comes. And the volunteers want to see the families too, they want to know who they're building with, and, you know, that engagement is important.
Very good. Leslie?
Hi, I was just curious if there's anything else that you ran into that changed the plan in any way for how the units would, would look, or where walls would be, anything like that, or is it pretty much true to the original plan?
Yeah, the plan is exactly the same so far. And we did run into, on the bigger house, there was frame out and fill-in where windows were before, so where you thought there'd be frames, there was nothing. So if you look on the side of the building, so all that we filled in to modify in order to meet the plan that we proposed, and the plan's staying the same. But the bigger house did add some complexity to that, but the plans are, are the plans.
Okay, great. Thank you both for all your work on this.
You bet.
Speaking of the plans, I want to give a shout-out to Tom Riordan, you know, Tom is on our Design Review Committee in town. He's providing all this architectural work as a gift and kind to the project. He did a lot of work at the beginning, and as complications have arisen, he's very cheerfully jumped in and helped out the project, and there's a lot of work Tom has contributed to this, which has really been, both his expertise has been, has been very important, but his generosity, his just cheerfulness through the whole project, it's been a pleasure to work with, and very important to getting this project to be completed.
Yeah, Ron Searle's the other individual that kind of led us off up front to make sure that we're doing things structurally, you know, and thinking this through as we go through, but it goes on and on, there are just names after names after names that are participating.
Very good. I'll just say that I'm very pleased that, as it turned out through the lottery process, we have three Northborough residents who are going to be occupying those units. It's, we certainly like to make the housing available to whoever needs it, but certainly feel, you know, that local families or something have the opportunity to do this, and just very happy to see that that worked out well for them.
Yeah, that's the luck of the lottery, I mean, the lottery you have no control over, and certain hats, names go into each hat, and, you know, worked out fortunate for the community.
Yeah, yeah.
Just one final comment, so between the four senior rental units that we built over on Center Drive, and now these four units, that will be eight affordable units added to the SHI, which in effect offsets 80 market rate units as far as keeping us at the 10% guideline for 40B. And we're actively looking for another project, you know, we think if we can do four or five units every two or three years, you know, using some CPA money to help offset the cost of doing the project, that that will really provide nice housing for people who need it, and also help keep our head above water long-term on this whole, you know, 10%.
Affordable housing stock.
Right.
Threshold to avoid a 40B.
Right.
Hostile 40B project.
So we'll continue to go forward, we'll continue to bug the CPC for some money from time to time, see if we can't keep these small projects going forward.
That's what it's there for.
That's right.
Just on that point, do you have a sense of what our margin is at the moment, as far as that 10% threshold is?
Kathy knows for sure, the last I heard, we were a little bit over 11%.
Okay.
When the Avalon project went in, because all of those units, even though only 25 were affordable, they all counted because they were rental units, that pushed us from below 10 to, I think, right around 11 and something.
So we're starting.
I'm not exactly sure where we are now, but I know we're safely above the 10%, but as more market rate units get built, we keep sneaking down, and that's why, like I said, if we can keep every, every once in a while adding four or five units, that offsets, you know, you know, 90% more of market rate units.
Very good, thank you very much, Tim.
All right.
Thank you for all your assistance with Habitat.
You bet, yeah.
For this project. And Rick, as always, thank you for your continuing service to the town.
Sure.
And for so much project.
Will say.
Next up is reports, Bill.
Yes, I just have one thing to report. I just actually want to thank Bill Liver and the Police Department for, a lot of people from River Street have commented how those flashing lights actually help people to slow down a little bit coming down river, so I want to thank you from the citizens in River Street area, so, that's my report.
Thanks. Dawn?
Yeah, I just have one thing too, I was able to attend the Senior Center Volunteer Brunch Friday, and I'd just like to thank Vicki Colleen and all her staff that worked so hard. The brunch was amazing, and all the volunteers seemed to really enjoy it, so one more time, Vicki and the staff of the Bistro came through, so that concludes my report.
Excellent. Leslie?
Yeah, I just had a couple of quick comments. One is that I am amazed at that Church Street Bridge, every time I drive over there, I know others have mentioned it at the meeting here, but it's beautiful. It really truly is. Amazed. It just, they really did a very fine job, but that wasn't just to slap it up and get the lanes back in, in order and so forth, they really did a nice job with that.
Well, then, Gabe, that's nothing else.
That's right. So I just wanted to comment about that again, I think it's very, very nicely done. And I'm also very happy that the Zemhan sign is down, I had mentioned that at our last meeting, and John had the building inspector speak with the owner of the building, and meeting, and John had the building inspector speak with the owner of the building, and he apparently was happy to have that taken down, and I think it's nice not to have a sign up for a building that no longer exists. For people who are new to Northborough and coming down 135, it's, it's nice to not see a sign that's old and, and actually terrible looking, and doesn't represent anything, so I'm very happy about that, so, thank you very much, that ends my report.
Jeff?
No report. I have no report tonight, Kim, any report?
No report.
No report, very good. This is the opportunity for public comments, do we have any public comments tonight from the densely populated? I'll take that as a no.
You can tell it's summer.
Everyone take a turn.
New business, we have a memorandum of understanding with the Northborough Extended Day Program. Kim, I think that will.
This is our annual agreement, it's been in place for more than 26 years. This provides support for the, excuse me, Northborough, Northborough Extended Day Program provides support to the town, they effectively leased off the space from us downstairs. The nice thing about the arrangement, the funds that they pay us do cover the expenses, which include the space, MIS support, web hosting, things like that, but it's also mutually beneficial. This is the funding that we use to pay the part-time administrative support position that supports NEDP and family need services.
Okay, so it's cost recovery essentially, very good. Any questions by the board? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the FY18 Annual Memorandum of Understanding between the town and Northborough Extended Day Care Program, Inc., for the use of the office space and facilities at the town hall, and authorize the town administration to execute the same.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Very good. Any other business to come before the board? There does not appear to be any.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn and a second, all in favor? Very good, we are concluded, thank you.